Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's anybody that has not signed the paper that wants to sign please do announce it. And when you speak, please say your name so she can get it corrected.
Me.
Um, this is Margie. The roll call, Heather. Shane Bailey. Here we go. Darren Howell.
Here.
Don Miller.
Here.
Theresa Stranton.
Here.
Randy Thorp.
Here.
Ian Barco.
Here.
Chip Morella.
Here.
Chris Farrell, not here yet. Michelle Nowalski, here.
You missed me, but I'm here.
Shayna Delaney.
Here. Shayna and Shayna next to each other.
I know, too. Stop, but it's work. All right, those have called.
Will you receive the minutes of the previous meeting for your review and approval? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I will second it.
Motion was made and seconded to accept the minutes. You have heard the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carried. Uh, now the bill list, Michelle.
Okay, I have three additions. The first one is to Nury Miller for a zoning hearing to add reimbursement of forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. The next one, these next two are out of the R.D. Wilson Lighting Complex Project account. First one is to Pioneer Construction Company Incorporated for sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the sports complex Phase Two. And the next one is to Richard Mellow Corporation for forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. On that for the sports complex lighting.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Please, Joe.
I'll second it.
Three additions.
Motion was made and seconded to pay the bills for the three additions. You have heard the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Please report, Chief.
Please report for due this year. Disabled vehicles, we had two, assisted other agencies, we had four welfare checks, one noise complaints, two PFA's, or two, let's see, suspicious persons, two traffic verbal warnings, one twenty-two ongoing investigations and forty-one calls for the law.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you for your report.
Yep.
And now the fire company report, Theresa, you're going to do that?
Yep. Um, for the month of June, they had three NVAs, three medical assists, two automatic alarms, two of the calls were in Waymark Borough, five in Canaan Township, and one in South Canaan Township. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, the mayor's report?
I have nothing.
Like, there's only an office to support, Joe.
All right, I, uh, we had a rat issue on Belmont Street. It was significant, actually, with the person in his yard, I probably didn't work in, I'd say ten fifteen, or rats. The organ took care of that. Then I know that the magistrate's office submitted the quality of life ordinance, it was accepted. I did write four citations last month. I also signed up the pay cut permit to Aqua and the sewer company. I had one complaint for high grass, took care of that, just my verbal warning. I had a zoning issue with a fence and a loan permit. I have three investigations going on right now, I'll find, I have eight possible investigations for this one. We're gonna talk about solar ordinances, well, three ordinances, both tourism and amendment. And, uh, that's it.
What's that? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Anything else, Joe?
Oh, actually, I do have one other thing. We got the plans and a pay cut permit for the culvert replacement and water line realignment, for the water main realignment for Belmont and Water Street.
Yeah, two ninety-six.
Yes, we have to, like, we have to have them, an engineer, who will, just please look at the plans. And Theresa says that she found somebody, the mayor was there, he said he knew somebody, so whatever you guys collectively want to do, whatever engineer you want to use, I kept, what was the guy you said?
Jeff, I got a message out to Jeff Weinberger.
And then there's, it was posted July, it was brought up, so whatever you guys want to do. But I have that, and once he approves it, I'll just sign off on it. Anyone wants to see the plans, they're in the office. That's it.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Where are we at?
Uh, split.
Okay, Chris? How are you?
I have a letter here from Melissa Ferris and Kathleen Sick. I'm not sure of the purpose of the letter, they wanted us all to know that there was a false confidential report filed with Children and Mute Services and it was unfounded. I don't see that it concerns us at all. They want this to be put into their file, whatever file that may be. And they're asking for guidance from us, we don't give guidance on matters like that. For the record, we do have correspondence from Melissa Ferris and Kathleen Sick, one nineteen Belmont Street, Waynemark.
It was addressed to us?
It's addressed, Dear Mayor Morella and Mr. Farrell.
Yeah, actually, well, actually, yeah, I was gonna say that.
Actually, it was addressed to me, it's Mayor Farrell.
I was very, very confused, and I just opened it because it was in our box, and I was like, oh my gosh, like, who is this for?
Anyway, they promoted me. There's still litigation going on with LaDore up there regarding their tax appeal, and we keep getting copied with pleadings, various pleadings, it's up to the appellate court, but again, we're not, even though we're named in it, we're not participating in it. The county can do that work, and whatever the outcome is, maybe we'll benefit from it, maybe we won't. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Correspondents?
Okay, so, um, so I, I brought, I've, usually, we get a lot of information from PennDOT and road copagers and everything. Usually, I delete them because they're all over the state. This one happens to affect our community in that it is, and I know I've already seen on Facebook, that Oak Lake Drive over the Benoff and Creek will be closed from Wednesday, July ninth, through the duration of the summer. The detours are listed here, if anybody wants to take a look at what they are, and I know it has been listed on, maybe not our Borough Facebook page, but I know on the Oak Lake page it was listed as well. So it gives you the detours here. Okay, so it's off at two ninety-six onto Oak Lake Drive. We have the ambulance report for the month of June, we have sixty-six dispatches, forty-seven responses, twenty-one calls, with eight going to mutual aid. I believe Chris brought this up at the last meeting. It's correspondence from the Wayne County Planning concerning the Drake Solar Farm outline plan. It's quite lengthy. Chris had talked about it last month, that the solar company needed to resubmit some plans, and I don't believe we've received those yet, to your knowledge, have you received anything?
I don't think so.
I haven't received anything either.
No, but perhaps we could just be ahead of it, I know they're scrambling. I know we have a solar ordinance, I don't think we're gonna need it, because they just gutted all the tax incentives, and I've been in touch with the gentleman who's gonna, plans on putting a solar farm over there. And I know he's in a rush to get it done. I think there's gonna be certain deadlines, I don't know if he's gonna meet them or not. But I get the feeling that with this new, big, beautiful bill, they gutted all of the tax incentives for solar and wind energy, which I think takes all the profit out of it, so I think we could just go.
Do you want a copy of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was very complicated, about the things that they felt that they, in the past, by that they should have come to them and, God, from that.
Can we, can I, can I suggest somebody just make a motion that Waynemark Borough will support and request from the solar company that they follow all of the recommendations from Wayne County Planning Department? I think that would be helpful for the gentleman that's doing the solar. Somebody make that motion. Whatever the recommendations from Wayne County Department of Planning.
I will make the motion, if you repeat it again, for Heather.
Okay, make a motion that Waynemark Borough supports Wayne County Department of Planning. Any recommendations that they request regarding the Drake Solar Land Development Plan, and we will join in those recommendations and require the same from the solar company.
And I'll second it.
I'll get it off there.
Okay, motion was made by Jane, seconded by Teresa, all in favor.
Aye.
Nay, extension, motion passes.
Oh, go back to me. Sorry. Um, all right, so July mixer at the Lower Valley Country Club with the Chamber of North Pokon, Northern Pokon. July sixteenth, five thirty to seven thirty, Country Club Drive in Hemlock. We have, I forward this on to the council, there was some open applications for transportation alternatives at the side for funding that improved pedestrian, bicycle infrastructure, public transit, et cetera. And the deadlines are here. The budgetable tin for the state should be released at the end of July. And then conference dates concerning PSAB for the ball have been released. We received a letter from Attorney Farrell for the zoning hearing board versus the Wayne County Housing Authority. Is this something to push you out, you're ready? Okay, on behalf of the Wayne, Waynemark Borough, the Waynemark Borough Council has no objection to how the zoning, zoning hearing board handles the matter as an independent body. Attorney Gregory and I agree that the transcript would be acceptable and admissible, would be understanding, it ultimately is the hearing board's decision. We certainly have no objection to that being submitted as evidence for the zoning board's solicitor to review. Please advise at the manning house.
And that was in response to a letter from Attorney Henry, who represents our zoning hearing board, that's a variance issue. Once they, with Gregory, in that hearing withdrew his request for conditional immunity, we lost our jurisdiction, then opposed to the zoning hearing board. So I just let him know that's what we agreed on with David Gregory, but ultimately, it's up to the zoning hearing board what they want.
We received after last month's meeting, the brief of appellate to, for the Borough Council of the Borough of Waynemark concerning KELG and, Albrand, I guess, if anybody wants some light reading? It's all right there. And I believe this is the, this is the motion to strike the brief, this was received, um, June twentieth. So.
Can I see that?
Yeah. And I do need some stuff for the office, but I can talk about it when ready, so I guess. Okay? All right, and I'm done.
Sounds good, thanks, Heather. Did everyone get to sign the guests and citizens? Have something to present, like, did, yeah? Okay, guests and citizens, Harold?
Hi, everybody, my name's Harold Benson. I'm calling in regards to residents that moved on the corner of East Street and Holmesdale Road. I spoke to the mayor about it, and, um, shame. Okay, this is what was all over my car, all over the house, everywhere in the grass. These are pictures. You wanna look at them, passing around? Is what they're doing up there with their race cars, all night, all the throwing stuff all over. I have a video around my house to their.
Down by the old eye doctor's.
Yeah. It's right on the corner, where they built that garage. And then here I have a, a video of down, drive racing, challenging the street.
I think I should just report it right to the chief.
Well, I told them, not the chief, but the other police officers, but here he comes down the street. Burn your bucket. I showed it to the mayor, and I promised to show it to you. And this is all the time, they ain't doing it with their cars, they have those side by sides, they're doing it down. They even fly over Grim's property over there. Stuff laying all over the road, constantly, the mayor saw. And he was gonna have that stuff, but that's what they're doing all the time up there. And if they string their plate in the backyard, they're out on the street doing it. Since they live in there, there's probably twenty people living in that house, half the time that are there. All kinds of cars blocking the road. I have pictures of them blocking the road with dump trucks and everything. And then when you go to go buy them, they say something snotty and curse at you. The other day I was going home, they said, somebody, now, the only one that knew was the girl, police officer, and fireman Jordan, were the only two over there. And they gave them our full names, and told them we called, and they got it on the radio. So they stopped us coming down the road, the husband and wife, and said they were gonna buy our house and throw us out. This is the type of people you're dealing with. You don't know who you're messing with, they say. I said, well, you better think twice, who you're messing with, that's just what I said. Went to my house, my mind. I just stopped back to the shore, I was there for a couple days.
Did, did any of the officers?
The girl, the girl officer, I told her on the phone, very good, very good. I thought I was permanently disabled, and she was very good. I said, honey, I'm sixty-three years old, I don't need some twenty-year-old girl down in the off.
Did it damage to your vehicle?
This, that, this stuff, no. But this stuff was always coming down in the sky, burning. And it was all over the place, it's even on the eyeglass place, it's in front of the post office, that's, these weren't fireworks you buy at the stand.
Aren't they firecrackers?
No, no, these are come, no, these are coming out. You ever see, like, you go to the regular firework, but that's what comes out? That's why they're out in the field shooting. And this was all over.
What's this, that, what is this?
This is oil all over the road from them people.
Outside of that?
No, there's oil, trash, everything, they throw everything in the road.
Has to have the chief.
And from my understanding, they're friends with a lot of people that are supposed to be over there.
There's video of, across the street, of the.
There's video, there's video from the, yeah, there's video at the post office and the daycare is right next door, with two cameras, not even two feet away from their driveway. This is what.
Is everything in that new quality of life ordinance, Joe?
Not for that specific.
No.
But that's, yeah, I don't know, I, I, with everything being dry, that's the thing. I mean, my car could have got damaged like he just did. With them landing all over my car, and I even showed him when he came home. He's like, well, you called the police, I'm like, she did? Well, I did what I had to do. You know, you're not, you're destroying property and don't even realize what you're doing. And it was all over, I mean, not just there, this stuff was all over, because they were shooting fireworks, you don't buy from a tenant.
Is that where the fire department could call down with that?
But I mean, it was bad, it was bad, and there's, it's still laying there, it's all over, everything. But thanks for listening to me.
Yeah, that, that Friday night, I was on until five, and then Harry came on, my assistant chief, and I, and Harry and my officer went off together. It was, it was kill over calm, I got the call here, I sent him over, they go over here, they strained it out, they said it was taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sort of burning out in the road and putting trash all over the place on public property is probably not a great thing.
Yeah, that, that, that wasn't, that didn't come out that night, so it was just the noise.
So did they get cited for anything?
No, because there was no noise when they got there.
Oh, that's true.
There is, um, I just looked up the, the firework laws in Pennsylvania, and if they're shooting those really big ones off, they're supposed, they're, they're, require a permit from the municipality, it must be used by trained professionals.
Well, I called the state police, and they said, call Waynemark, I called Waynemark, and they still did it for a little while. The state police did come down and ride down the street and back up, it didn't.
And it says restrictions include not using fireworks on public or private property without permission within a hundred and fifty feet of buildings or vehicles or while under the influence. Municipalities may also restrict the use of fireworks between ten PM and ten AM, except for certain holidays.
I would say they were a hundred and fifty feet, right?
Yeah, they went small.
If they were Class Bs, you need an ATF, because I have a, I have an explosive license, okay? It's, it's somewhat the same, but ATF issues that license for Class Bs, they're Class Bs commercial. Doubt it very much if they're shooting Class Bs. But common fireworks are big enough, they're, they're just as close, there's five hundred milligrams of powder in them now. They're almost at a Class B right now. So that's what they do. In Pennsylvania, it says they're legal. Unless it's a Class B, but.
I don't know what they are, she's, she's got a video.
On a public borough, though?
No, the rural. Fred, did you wanna see this video?
Well, that's up to the ordinance of you guys.
So this, so it's something that.
Not in borough, okay? But they're legal in Pennsylvania right now.
They have the street looking terrible up there with the oil and garbage and the fire, I mean, it's terrible, and it's not.
You can't shoot them off on public property, though.
Your own, you can.
On a street?
Not on the street.
On another road?
No, on your own property, you can.
Oh, yeah, right, because they would shoot them off your street.
But Theresa said it was a hundred and fifty, there, there's no way they're a hundred and fifty feet away from Waltons.
No.
Only if it's Class B. You have to prove they're Class B.
Here's the, they're not, they're not little.
This is from a neighbor across the street.
Yeah, but Chris Ham, and then her husband called me about it.
I those now, so.
Yeah, but it's still. Send my house out, I already have something to say about it.
Best thing is if the borough puts a fireworks warning sign in the borough.
I mean, shoot them off your yards, one thing, but in the street.
I understand, but you're gonna still have complaints of people shooting them off in between houses. I don't think you should have any area fireworks within the borough. They're all serious.
Houses are too close.
Everything's serious.
I mean, it, it's one thing to get those little ones from the stands, but that, that's big.
Yeah, but no longer do stands just sell little ones, I'm telling you, but we go now to shoot aerials.
I know.
And they're so expensive, how can people afford it?
So.
So is there anything you used to do at this point, then, in the police department?
No.
What about the marks that they're leaving on the road? It's burned out.
You can look at, did you just look at some of the overhogs down on, and it fell, um, or it.
That guy, that guy fell, actually, he's got charged today, he's many days on parole, then he's gonna be charged.
Of parole, okay.
Yeah, many days parole, and then they're gonna charge him with some other thing.
You know, the, the people, if these people get away with this now, they're the continuous.
It's a little different.
No, for since they built that garage, they roamed the road. They roamed the street up there since they built that garage. They're raising cars in there, and if you let them get away with that, it's only gonna get worse, because they're from New York, and I'll tell you right now, I have nothing against people from New York, but they're not gonna stop. Especially when they start approaching people in the street, blocking off the street, making people drive through the, uh, post office parking lot to get by, because they're got the street blocked. They got a thirteen-year-old kid driving a, um, pulling one of those trailers with the pickup truck, and he's thirteen years old, moving it around through the bank, or through the, blocking in front of the south. I mean, really, just go pull up the video from the, uh, post office, they have it, you'll see it. I mean, it's ridiculous.
What did the state?
The people, well, when they, by the time they got down, because there's not many on at night, by the time they got down, they were all standing there, they weren't doing nothing. So they rode down the street, I watched them, rode up the street, and my videos goes up and down the street, I can see everything. They turned around and they even said to me, they said, they do it again called Waynemark Police. And then they, then that one night, Waynemark went off, because they've been shooting them before the holidays. There's been going on for like two weeks up there with the nonsense, the squealing tires, shooting fireworks off, and they have a backyard. They have a backyard probably as big as a baseball field. Why can't they shoot them there? Why do they have to put them on the street, destroy the street, block cars off? It's not right. I couldn't even get through there, I had to go up and back around the block, because I flew in there a couple times during the road.
Chief, you don't have to witness it, if he wants to go and testify, he's gonna be questioned credibility.
And then he says.
If you can specific, if you can specifically identify the car and the person driving it.
Yeah, it's in, it's in there, it's the sun.
The defendant won a couple weeks ago.
He approached, he approached me and he said.
Cop was not there.
He approached me and said, oh, you causing more trouble for me, I'll buy your house and throw you out, I said, go ahead, I don't care. I like Waynemark, I really do, but I'm not gonna deal with something like that on the corner. And I don't wanna call the cops every five minutes. But they need to do something.
Video it.
Well, that's why I got the car on the visit, you know what I mean, it's.
Put some video cameras out.
You know? And I, I'm a lung, heart, kidney patient, I have to wear the button, and I can't breathe that. I leave my house, because of the smell, I mean, come on.
Video it, call the chief, tell me about the other.
Well, when I called there, they tell me it's not, they're not on, so, then I called the state police, and they only got a couple guys on, they tell me. So when they get there, they get there, they say, so what are you gonna do? Your fight is losing back.
After the video, now if they want to do something.
Could he file, play with you now? Hey, but can you identify the driver?
I believe it was the sun, so I'm gonna say no.
The roof right there.
Yeah, I'm gonna say no, because I, the only one I've.
Gotta be beyond a reasonable doubt, I can state beyond a reasonable doubt, it was this guy.
Right, right. And I know that, I know it's their car, because they have it in the driveway, but I can say it was the sun, because that's the one that approached us, acting like a millionaire.
All right, well, well, the chief's aware of it now, so.
But like I said, I can't keep calling them and bothering them, you know what I mean? I only called them, I think, three times since, with Phil, and I don't wanna keep calling the police.
Yeah, I do, okay.
And maybe we should consider doing an ordinance of some kind for the aerials. Houses aren't too close together.
In, in the street, yeah, people's yards, I mean.
Well, before they would block all their cars.
Nobody complained about shooting them off people's yards.
Yeah.
They've shot them off in the street.
Before they, they still do it, though, they block where you can't even see the stop sign sometimes. I watched a lady coming up there one day, I think I was telling you, Anne, over at the restaurant, yeah, she's coming up the right, right through she went, because she didn't know there was a stop sign there, probably wasn't from here at all, but she went right through, and almost hit another car. They do what they want.
They can write it for that.
Right. By half the time they're not on, right?
All right, thanks, Mr. Benson. Leroy?
Yes.
What's going on, you have something?
Uh, I had, got called about a question.
About the signs on Water Street.
All right, I'm gonna go, nice talking to you, Zomo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, taking two ways or one-way street now?
Okay, we got nowhere to put a stop sign on this street.
Yeah, I know, it's all broke off into the concrete.
Yeah, there was two cars hit. So therefore, there should have been two police reports and two claims to insurance companies. What, I don't know whatever got followed up, it went up the chain installed, far as I know.
I don't think we ever got anything.
What's the stop sign?
No, that's not the sign, the post is set in the concrete, it busted the curb out, too. So therefore, it's not just pound a sign in the ground, you gotta tear that whole curb out to get it put back in. That's why it was supposed to be turned in through the insurance companies.
You can probably catch him.
By the police reports.
So you know who it was?
Which way is he going?
There's police reports on those two accidents.
Oh, okay.
So if nothing went up the chain, well, then I don't know, because if it went up the chain installed, it went up the chain installed. But that's, that's what the holdup is on that whole situation, because there's nowhere to place a stop sign.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at it. The AFT almost bolted to the curb.
And what, have it, have it at foot level?
So is it too late to get it filed?
I don't know, that's, that's, that's lining up our echelon.
Did you see it?
That would be between the police department and solicitor, as far as I know.
Not too late. But is it, who, do we know, do we know who did it?
There's reports on it, yes.
He said it was a police report.
Okay.
It was two different occasions, that, the first occasion, there was. There was two different occasions, that, the first occasion, there was actually enough that we could have bolted a new pole to it.
We, we need to have a bill.
The second car went up and over it and we, it had to be, it was split, it had to be cut off so the car could be removed.
The bill should have been presented to the person who had the accident, so that it'll be included for the insurance company. So the question is, is who's gonna make out the bill and submit it to these people? I don't know.
Because that curb has to be cut open in order to pound, put a sign in.
Who are we getting to do that?
Well, we have to get quotes, but first we gotta check with the chief to see if the-
Probably under ten grand, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, we can at least get a price and commit to them.
Do you have to go back to what happened?
It, it's, it's two years, is, isn't it?
Price wise, like?
Chat cases, against our insurance companies, forty years, but to sue the person that picked it, it's two years.
Two years.
Uh, chief, do you remember a report, or do you have the report for, two reports for the stop sign at the bank?
Two reports.
The sign post at the bank.
Two reports, no. When did these reports come in?
Last year.
No, two years ago, it was like a year and a half ago or better.
Was it last year?
No.
There is supposedly reports filed, so that's all, that's what I was being told.
God, was that one-way changed?
Two years ago.
It's longer than two years that one-way's been there.
The one, it was, still had the one-way sign on it, the post had the one-way sign on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it got leveled off, then another car came along a few weeks later and took the rest of the post right down.
Okay.
And from what I, the information that I was told is that there was reports filed on both.
Who told you that?
Yeah.
Harry?
Oh, it's Harry, you're gonna need to hear something.
So, and that's what I was told, because I asked about it here years, so, a while back, and I got told that there was, there was reports filed, so.
We have two years.
Okay, can we check with Harry? I'll check with Harry, yeah.
If there wasn't, well, then we're on our own to get it fixed.
Okay.
But that's, that's why there can't be, that's why we can't place a stop sign there and take those signs down. Because you can't legally put a stop sign on the opposing lane of traffic. What? You gotta, you gotta have your stop sign in the travel lane, you can't have it in the opposite lane.
No, I understand that, how about the, the two tall signs that say do not turn into Water Street?
There's only one.
There's only one left?
At the bank, there's one on the corner where the old bank is, the one that's in, that was in the bank parking lot, it's long gone.
Yeah.
People, what it's saying is the curb.
That's the post that was gone.
Well, people stop there, I watch them on my window, of course, people stop there.
The, the other end, Jane.
And they, and they puzzle whether they can turn on there or not, and some do turn and some don't turn.
Most people don't even pay attention to those signs.
Yeah. Well, I see it every day.
Can you look and see, and just let me know if there's a, can you look into that and then, because we could put a bill together if we had the numbers, I mean, that's not a big deal.
Wouldn't it be on like a, a monthly report that you have that you present every month, wouldn't it be like two years ago in that time, accident or?
I think you're filed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it'd take a while to look that up, yeah, I could do that right now.
That's it right now, you do that in this time.
Yeah.
Because I know for at least one of them, there was information handed in.
Well, if Harry's aware, then I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll just ask Harry. I'm good, all of you Leroy.
Yeah, because, well, the one, the, the one I know for a fact is I was there and I got all the information and got it to him, so.
Okay, that was a couple years ago?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
It can't be, can't be more than two years.
Yeah. I don't know, I guess we'll see.
We have to find the date.
You know a name to?
Yeah, see, that's the other problem, everybody's known by name.
Okay.
Yep.
Harry didn't know.
He's gonna have to know by name, everybody's known by name.
All right.
Well, if he, he was cited, couldn't you use a citation number?
I don't know if he was cited or not, all I know is there was information put into the report.
No, I'm asking if you-
Yeah.
If you're cited, that should be easy to find.
Yeah.
Or if it was just made into a report and that was it.
I had been.
Okay, just acknowledged and that was as far as it went, I don't know. All I know is information was given.
All right, appreciate it.
It, it got passed, yeah, passed up the food chain.
Uh, Maria Miller.
Just, um, I'll hand this to Heather, I brought it, but kinda left it here. Zooming hearing board just has a few questions, maybe someone could look that over and then we could meet and make some decisions. It's just about how to function here at the building, like I, I borrowed a key from Donald to get in, I suppose that's okay. Access to the printer, paper, I don't wanna rifle through your things, right? Storage for our files and things like that, so maybe even Heather could be the one to sit and answer some of our, like, everyday questions.
We'll send you, Bill.
I'll submit it to you.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
So that, to go back one minute, back to, uh, the plans for the bridge. Jeff will meet me on Monday afternoon to look at the, the bridge plan.
Mm-hmm, okay. Oh, there you are. Uh, Eugene.
Hello. I'm Eugene Etiker, and back when you gave Drake's permission to put the solar farm in, they were over thirty thousand dollars behind on taxes. I was wondering if they paid any of that yet.
I, I would ask nobody to comment on that, it doesn't concern us, we don't want anybody to make a defamatory statement, whether they did or not, it's not worth it. But that money doesn't go to us, you chief.
Oh, I know.
Not was, okay.
No, I know that.
It's just, uh, it's no concern.
It, it should, because they're behind on taxes. So she gets her lease money, I guarantee she's not gonna pay the taxes, but.
Eugene, give me a little legal advice, honey, avoid a lawsuit, end it there.
I know.
Defamation, if you make a false statement, which lowers an individual's reputation in the eyes of the community, you just defame the person and you could be- But you have your free speech.
Thanks. Close Donnie McFellis here, let me go.
An- anything else?
None.
Okay, any other guesses? No. Uh, committee reports, Jane.
Uh, the bid is going to be open, uh, the eighteenth at three thirty for the Wayside Park. I was very happy to go to the pre-bid meeting, and there was nine different groups that came that are interested in bidding on it. And even if we only get half of them, it, it bodes well for the cost of what we're going to do in phase one of the park. The second thing, I hope that all of you got a chance to go down to Bob Wilson Field to see the progress. We're almost to the fifty percent part of the work down there. The most expensive thing so far, just so you know, the infield mix, it comes all the way from Downington Field. And with the cost of Pioneer to transport it, it's called, uh, it, each of those loads that you saw go down there, were twenty-two thousand dollars each. And, uh, we're, uh, uh, I, we're at the half part of the money we're spending. And I also wanted to bring up that we had in the original agreement, the original grant that started this whole thing with the field, that I wrote about six years ago. We had five thousand dollars in there that, that the borough was going to throw in. Because, uh, of any of those grants that I've done in the past, we, we've always have, uh, gave a certain amount to, for the match. And so I would like to request the five thousand dollars for the Bob Wilson Field, that was in the original, uh, match.
Didn't the grant that you originally wrote get turned down?
No, we got, no, not the original grant.
We have what, three thousand for the doors?
Yeah. I told them that, three thousand, that's.
Okay, almost, we almost had three thousand.
Almost.
Okay.
I'm cutting the interest now.
Okay.
There's five grand bills from Jane's back, I remember that, that was in that, that we would commit.
It's just like this building here, when I got the dish on the back, you know, I, I, we talked about it, we put down five thousand. I was able to get enough other grant money to cover, so we didn't have to pay it. So sometimes we've had to pay it, sometimes we haven't, in this case, we have it, so.
Do we need the motion? I'll make the motion. Five thousand dollars in the Waymark Earl to the Ballpark.
No. Yeah, to Ballpark. And I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane, all in favor.
Aye.
Nays, extensions, motion passes.
So it's, uh, to the sports complex?
Thank you. Yes.
That's kind of the official wording.
Yeah, and.
Transfer from the general fund to the, our Robert E. Wilson complex.
And, uh, I, I, if you ever get a chance to talk to Concall down there, he's, uh, he's a wonderful young man. He, uh, is in, is a foreman, I know him from school, you know?
Yeah.
Everybody's.
He's doing a great job.
All, all you people are little children to me, but anyway, he, uh, he's doing a great job there and I have to commend him very much. They're working now with Joe to get, um, and they're working with some other groups here, which I will reveal eventually, that, to build the, uh.
The dugouts.
Dugouts.
Yeah, there's quite a few volunteers.
It's amazing.
In, in material.
I'm so thankful the, the people have stepped forward. So anyway, and the other, of other grants, I have either turned in or am going to turn in this week to get the reimbursement. I was hoping by tonight I'd get the reimbursement for the ambulance cord, but it didn't, I didn't get the check yet.
Okay.
Were the, the checks for the doors already put in for the three thousand? Because the general, the general checking is saying we have three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. So where are we getting five thousand from?
I'm transferring five thousand into, from the general fund into the, so I'm gonna basically write a check for five grand out of the general fund, and it's going to go into the Robert E. Wilson account.
That's the general checking?
General checking, yes, so I have.
But our, and our balance is three thousand.
Well, I'm gonna have to transfer them from the money market into the general checking.
She keeps it in the money market to get the interest.
Central interest.
Okay.
And, and I guess you gotta answer your question in all of it, but what one check in is, do you have?
Yeah, all right.
I, I'd also would like to know if anybody knows how to do municipal bid, so we can do it.
Oh, uni-bid.
Yes, I don't know how to do it.
Do you have the poles and lights on there?
Put the lights in the pole.
Yeah, I don't think we have an account for that.
We, we need to do that, even if we only get half the money.
I have a catch.
Then, then I'll have to find the rest of it.
Well, we have one person interested in the pallet lights, but they couldn't buy it off of Facebook, does that have it on Facebook? He said they only could buy it through municipal bid or uni-bid, whatever it is, so, yeah, so we have to have an account.
So if you give me the information, I'll send it, figure it out, it can't be, I.
I don't know.
Difficult.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, you give them the information.
I can, I can give you the information, yes, um, I have a link.
Yeah, and you give me the link and, I mean, now's a good time for me to try to figure that out, so.
But I just don't know how to get on municipal bid, I don't even know what that means.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe get the information, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
And then, uh, like I said, uh, the other grants we're trying to get from, we'll get the money as soon as we can for the state, to reimburse the different, uh, grants. And I'm working right now, I'm finishing, uh, for the six doors and doing a lot of paperwork. Paperwork is over, is daunting anymore, so that's my report for tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Jane, they're getting shorter and shorter.
We were waiting for the day when they say, no more grants, they're all we have.
Yeah. Uh, budget finance, Teresa.
I got nothing.
Streets and Roads, me, um, I really don't have anything, um, I told, um, Greg Skol that he got awarded the line painting. Um, the garage doors, to touch on that a little bit, northeast door, um, they just have to come back and wire everything in, but the electrician's done. Didn't paint the electrician? Okay.
Howard, or, yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, but that's, that's just about wrapped up.
Was there anything in the budget about, about how much we can spend for the streets, about the painting on the streets?
Yeah, yeah, his quote was thirty-four hundred, thirty-six hundred, something like that, but then Pendak came through, oil trip, so they may replace some of the crosswalks that we're removing.
Well, I'm very concerned about those two holes in the bridge up there, what's to keep them from getting bigger and bigger?
Where's that?
Up by the hotel, there's, there's a hole.
By the hotel. And they're not gonna do it to next year, remember, the, the.
Yeah.
They said they're not gonna do it to next year, but I think it's a dangerous situation for people driving across. And I saw a big truck go across there with a huge load on it, and you actually could see it sinking as it drove, as it drove across.
You need to wait one more time. Yeah, that's a Pendak, Pendak, right?
Pendak Bridge.
Mm-hmm. Uh, other than that, yeah, northeast door just has to, um, get the remotes to talk to the receivers and that's it. Uh, but that's all I have, Parks and Rec.
Remember I've, I've told you about the, um, the great, uh, um, Flores? The one where the hole is?
Oh, yeah.
You know what, I was really looking at that good the other day, it just needs to be pulled forward, it's crooked on the, on the basin.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you could take the backhoe up or something, but it looks like it just needs to be.
Adjusted.
Adjusted, it's, it's crooked, and I think once that's done, you won't have that big hole in the front. I don't know if you wanna take a look at it later, but it looks like it just needs to be centered.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do we got now, uh, Parks and Rec, Shayna.
Uh, yeah, so obviously the parade was a success, everybody loved the fireworks, it was a huge success, the fireworks that were done legally, um.
They, they were some of the best ones we saw this year.
Obviously, we didn't get as many people because of the, the weather, um, and obviously we're competing with Jefferson, but we do every year. Um, Nick Dirk just had his car show this past weekend at RD, that was another success, um, a lot of cars showed up. Unfortunately, Nick has decided after eight years, he's not doing it anymore because of a group of people that showed up three hours early and told him where they were going to park when he had a plan for the trucks. So I'm still trying to see if we can have that happen, because obviously that car show, originally, we raised money for our canine dog, but then we had to retire our canine dog, so it was going to Desen this year. Um, so, yeah, Nick is unfortunately, at this moment, saying he's not gonna do it next year, but I'm gonna try to talk him out of it. Um, the only other thing I have is when the Wayside Park project starts, just so I can get a date, because I'm gonna be starting planning for the one hundred and seventy-fifth for Waymark. Um, so obviously, if I could get a key, so I could use this building to have meetings and get volunteers, um.
Do you have a key to that?
You don't have a key?
No, I don't. Um, so that's the only thing, so I'm gonna start reaching out to people this week. Uh, Josh at the fire company said they'd be willing to help, and I'm gonna try to get some other volunteers, I'm gonna start planning for the one seventy-fifth. So obviously, if it's okay with everybody to, I utilize this building to meet with people, but like I said, I don't have a key, so, but, yeah, that's all I have.
Um, I do know that a couple people have approached me that were part of the seventy-six, I think.
If they're willing to volunteer their time, I would love their help.
Would you want to volunteer and forgive the ideas that they had and some of the things that they did, so.
Yes. The more people I have, the better, because I'm not doing it myself, so.
And Jane, I think clarification from the Historical Society, someone from the Historical Society will volunteer on your committee, it's just that we are gonna do.
You guys are gonna do your separate thing.
Something, but we're also willing to be a part of the bigger planning, okay?
Got it, okay.
Great, thanks Shayna, get you a tea.
Thanks.
Um, utilities, don't. Safety, Darren.
What, where's somebody?
No recommendations.
You're the safety person, what's up there?
Yeah, uh, Randy, purchasing.
All right, can I interject here?
Sure.
The office needs some things.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Um, so we need paper and ink, and we need, uh, time cards and three ring binders. Now, I went on the supply store, and this is just my personal opinion, but I think we should stick with the HP ink for the copy machine instead of buying off-market, because my experience has always been, once you buy off-market, it starts clogging up the machine and the machines don't work right. Um, the difference between the Quill supply store and Amazon is probably almost four hundred and five hundred dollars. Between the paper, the ink, even the HP brand ink and the three, and the three ring binders that we need for the minutes. Um, would it be okay if I purchased it and then just got reimbursement? Um, because we've been doing great on paper, we've really been doing, you know, great on other things, so, um, I just need that, okay? Okay, thank you.
Good deal, thanks Heather.
Oh, 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 and I have to make this announcement, cause I'm really proud of myself. All the minutes are caught up to date in the book from time I took over of September twenty-two to current time.
Thanks Heather.
That little old Stamper thing is a pain in the butt, I just wanna say. Okay, that's it.
Great. Unfinished business, um, we have to finalize the conditional use hearing to lock in a few conditions that were mentioned during the hearing, and, um, just need a motion.
My understanding at the last meeting, there was a motion to deny it, and that didn't pass, but it was never followed up with a motion to approve. So we need to make a motion, I was in touch with Jeff Tree, the attorney for the applicant, and we came up with three conditions that I think they're agreeable to, it would be agreeable to the brother. So if you wanna make that motion.
Sure, I can read it up?
What are the conditions?
We're here, I'll read them.
Okay.
No hazardous materials stored on the property, work hours from nine PM to seven AM, and no materials stored outside the building.
No?
No work hours.
No work from nine, yeah, it's twenty, no work hours from nine PM to seven AM.
Oh, man, uh, yeah, so that's the motion, um, so we just needed to make a motion to approve these three conditions.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, considering that it's not zoned properly for what they wanna put it in there for, or put, what they're putting in there, um, could there be a condition that after PT tubes is finished with their lease, that it's already commercial, so it's not gonna go back to commercial, but it goes.
Well, it did change the zone, so a, a new tenant would have to come back in and get approved for what they want.
So PT leaves.
It's back to.
Yeah, because the zoning didn't change for it, we just gave.
So they would actually commit, it would.
Approval, doesn't mean we have to give the next person approval, which is kinda what's going on where they wanna put the drug rehab. So, you know, you don't have, once you approve it once, you don't have to approve it for commercial forever.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it for.
I'll second the motion.
Um, Randy made a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
To grant the.
Conditional use under these three conditions.
You do another?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, abstentions, motion passes. And the sidewalk maintenance agreement, did, did.
We need to do another copy.
Okay, did, did you see that, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a couple checkboxes we have to check off on.
There's a couple things that need to be checked off that need to, maybe.
And then it just needs our.
Uh, I got it again?
Okay, well, Chris, we're done with that, we can go on to new business.
I'd like to bring up about, since, uh, Shannon has mentioned about, uh, next year and the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary and of course it's the one-seventy-fifth of Waymore Borough, uh, I was very, very distressed to go out to see the graveyard on the lane that we were talking about before, that belongs to Mindy Drake's and her mother. And, uh, the Aesha Stanton, he was a revolutionary, um, colonel. He was good friends with, uh, General Washington, and, uh, there is a wonderful monument out there. If you haven't visited, please walk out there and see, you can park right in back of the barn, and you just walk down to it, it's a right away to go there. But please, folks, please give us some ideas, especially, you brought it up at the historical meeting the other night. We need to have someone, we used to get prisoners, uh, that we would get from Farview, that would clean it up. But now, and then, uh, uh, when she worked here at the post office, I can't even think of her name, she lives in New York.
Yeah.
She, she did it and had people in her family do it, but I'm just, it looks terrible right now.
How big is that area?
I will, Jane, I did it before, I'll do it again.
Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
You know, the reason I stopped is a tree fell on me, and I just never had time to cut the tree.
Do you need more people to help you?
No.
Let me know, if it's, if I'm around, I'll come and help too.
The problem is, it's a country rash, you gotta do it every week.
Yeah, that's, you know.
Unless it's raining, and then it's every two weeks.
And, and, and the second, the second graveyard that's in back of the funeral home, they were smart, somebody a hundred years ago, they put our, they grew our butis. You know, the little blue flower? It only grows this high, and it's a carpet there, and you don't have to cut the grass at all. So when you're down to the, if you're down for the funeral home, walk up there in the back, there's a, a little area in the wall, and you walk through and see that graveyard, and hardly anything has to be done there. I, I, so it depends what you grow in these graveyard, and it really is beautiful this time of the year, please stop and see it.
Well, the one behind you grows ivy. Poison.
I know, I know.
I have one of those blowtorches.
I got one.
I'll give it to you.
That might not be allowed.
Can't breathe it in.
You can't burn, I said.
You can't burn it.
You can't burn poison, man.
Or you'll die. You can burn it, but you will die if you breathe it in.
So, so we have Aesha Stan's graveyard covered.
Uh, yes, thank you, and if anything I can do, it was here.
First snake I see, I'm gone.
For all, for all people, you know?
A couple more things to get through.
And, uh, anyway, I very, very, very much appreciate your time.
That's gotta be adopted by a motion change.
Okay, so we have to adopt this, we gotta sign it to Chris, you sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Take the motion first and sign it.
So a motion to, so the sidewalk maintenance agreement, so, uh, I guess in a nutshell, they're replacing the bridge up there, the sidewalks, and that'll pay for all, but then the borough has to take over the sidewalks across the bridge.
Basically, you have to shovel it, that's about all.
And ma- and maintain them if they ever deteriorate.
Joe?
In, in that, when I read that as well, it, it states that, that the borough can create an ordinance that the property adjacent to the sidewalk are responsible for the sidewalk, we already have that. So technically, the borough won't be responsible, it'll be the people who are adjacent to the sidewalk. Like any other town, if it's sidewalks in front of your house, you shovel it.
Franny? Franny?
One more thing to relay, that's all.
Well, if you don't like it, you can go to the cemetery.
Well, yeah, that's all I.
So we need a, a motion, um, we have to sign this and send it back.
Motion then turn to the.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Darren and seconded by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, abstentions, motion passes.
Gotta sign that, others gotta send it in.
Okay, alright, um, that's, uh, okay. And so we have a, an amendment to the Waymore Borough fee schedule, so this, in a nutshell, um, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, so any.
Everybody receive a copy of it, yes.
Yeah, anytime, um, someone comes to Joe for a permit, um, there's no way, we don't collect any fees, so it's a, a direct cost, so if someone wants to build whatever garage, a deck, something like that, it's, goes through Joe, um, and then, you know, everybody else kind of puts the bill to pay Joe to do the paperwork. So this allows us, well, really, really not us to collect it, we're the, in the end, we get the twenty percent, but it's a third party that actually collects it, so if it's, um, what, a house and it goes to NEIC, NEIC actually collects the twenty percent and then cuts us back a check. That makes sense?
Or we, or, or we just pay the difference of the twenty percent. Like what, I got to offer total cost.
Oh, gotcha, oh, we just hold that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Either way, well, you're in the, you're in the email chain with them, with me, so, you know, they, uh, we've never done it.
Yeah, we've never had it, so.
Never the borough does. It's township, it's city.
Okay, yeah, I think it makes sense.
But we need this in order for them to withhold.
Gotcha.
We need an amendment.
So we have to send this back to them?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
And then update our fee schedule that we have?
Yeah, yeah, this'll just be an amendment to it. We don't, we don't have.
But the fee schedule has to be updated.
They don't have to update it, no, this is just an amendment.
Yeah, this is just.
Any questions? Thoughts, concerns? So we just need a motion to adopt the amendment to the Waymore Borough fee schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Shayna, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, motion passes to adopt the Borough fee schedule. Um, um, okay, so we have an, um, an ordinance amending the Waymore Borough zoning ordinance to permit large-scale solar farms as a special, special exception used in the industrial zone, and also an ordinance amending the Waymore Borough. Yeah, right, we have to advertise for this for two weeks.
Yep.
And then.
We'll vote on it.
Yep, so a, a motion to advertise for both of these. Um, one for large scale in the industrial zone, and then, um, one to permit residential solar energy systems in designated zoning districts.
I'll make a motion to advertise both the solar farm ordinance and the residential solar ordinance.
I second it.
Motion was made by Teresa, seconded by Shayna, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, abstention, motion passes to advertise.
And this is a motion, this will lead to vote for the Aug meeting?
Yes.
Oh, cool. August, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Summer's over.
I think, uh, I think that's all she wrote, motion to adjourn.
Is someone, is. Is someone going to represent the council at the zoning hearing in twenty seconds?
Did you write it?
Was that a volunteer?
What time is it at?
It's like the army, to do first.
Here?
What time?
I'll represent, I'll be here, I can be here, twenty seconds, at five?
I could, I could probably come as well.
Okay.
Alright, more than one.
Tell me, when this way of it, do whatever you need to do.
One to three, Ken.
Thank you.
The fireworks, the fireworks are expanding.
Farmer Appreciation Day.
It is what?
The third Saturday of September, September.
Randy made a motion to adjourn?
I said.
She seconded it on the other.
And all the same are being, it's like, we'll have lunch.